Everybody, it is July 30th, 2020, and we have a quorum present on the mud side. Mayor Nick, I think you also have a quorum present as well, correct?
I will call our meeting together, and we do have a quorum. Everyone is present.
We'll call this special joint meeting together then. Again, it is 6:33. First item on the agenda, consider and take appropriate action regarding the Fire Protection Services fiscal year 2021 budget. And I will turn that over, I believe, to Jay.
And before Fire Chief Taylor makes comments, let me just kind of preface with some comments that, you know, there was some mix-ups on our staff's part, and I take responsibility for it of getting information to mayor and council on this. You know, I'm still trying to figure out how this whole mud and fire department work. It's not very common in Texas city towns. You got a new town manager, you got a new finance director, you got a new fire chief. Allen's new at the mud, so we're all kind of learning this, but at the end of the day, we've got a, and what you'll see from Chief Taylor is a very, I think, reasonable budget. Little over a 3% increase, and there's two major factors driving that that he will get into. And between Chief Taylor and Fire Marshal Cochran, who put the budget together, they've got over 50 years of fire service, so we're very fortunate to have their expertise. And again, this is, I think, a very reasonable budget. And I do apologize that some of the detail that some of you may have wanted didn't get there. And we'll get that corrected, but with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Taylor.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening to mayor, council, and mud directors. Obviously, tonight I'll be presenting you the overview of the fire department budget. It's a challenging time right now. You know, in past years, we would have gotten together in the past few weeks, maybe discussed this a little more. Because of the COVID challenges, it's put a damper on everything we do, and we've had to learn how to operate a little bit differently than we're used to. And that's going to be the new normal. We were talking about that today, how things are going to change, and probably for permanency. So, working through this budget, our goal was to develop a budget that meets the fire department's immediate needs while ensuring the department's long-term fiscal stability and stewardship of our citizens' trust. Our vision is to maintain a relatively flat budget. That's what I was directed to do, and to do that as close as possible. We're researching ways to continually raise the bar of service and provide our community the best type of service that we can. So, we're trying to raise the bar at every opportunity. Since I've been here, April, we've got a great team around me, a great team in the town. And we've already started that process. Our goal is for other departments, fire departments around this area, to look to Trophy Club to see what Trophy Club's doing. And they're already asking those questions, so already making an impact, and that's just because I have a great team around me. And we've done a lot of research and worked really hard to accomplish the things we've accomplished at this point. So, my PowerPoint is fairly brief, and as Steve touched on and elaborated, it's a 3% increase. I'm going to share this document right now. We'll get started into it, and we can explain exactly where we are. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, got the document on there. Again, thank you for allowing me to have this presentation, and at the end, obviously, we'll have time for as many questions as you need and any clarification. I'd be happy to sit here as long as we need to, to get this accomplished and answer your questions. Okay, as you see, as we talked about maintaining a relatively flat budget was the goal this year, and we've researched ways to do that while also being creative in the services that we provide to our residents. As you'll see, the overall budget increases 3%, which is just over $45,000 total. With that, that includes a 4.7% increase in personnel portion of the budget. That also includes a 1.4% decrease in services and supplies. During this past few months, we've had the opportunity to have some department accomplishments that we're very proud of that reflects well on both the mud and on the town. In 2020, this spring, we were awarded back on June 23rd, the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award. That's a very prestigious award in EMS. All of our firefighters here are paramedics, as am I. So, we're very well-trained in cardiac prevention, also treating cardiac patients, identifying what a STEMI is, which is an ST elevated myocardial infarction. It's a big heart attack. But our crews here are very well-trained in that, in diagnosing the STEMI's to the point where they can activate the cath lab at Baylor Great Vine, get the doctors on hand, and have them waiting when a patient arrives. We've had tremendous success with activation of the cath lab and the people that we've allowed to walk out of the hospital just a few days later. And when they come by to see us at the fire station, it's always a blessing and something that really makes us proud of what we do and the training that we have. The EMS system that we're in is outstanding with Dr. Northheim leading the helm. And the crew we have here, they're very passionate about the fire and EMS side of it, and they love getting out and serving our residents, and this is a tribute to that. Recently, July 6th, we had an ISO assessment. That's the insurance service offices. I believe you're probably all aware of what ISO is and what that means to a community. Trophy Club is an ISO 3 currently and has been for the last 12 years. Normally, the ISO assessment happens once every 10 years. We're actually two years behind that. Upon day one of me arriving here in Trophy Club, one of the first things that Fire Marshal Cochran made me aware of was the fact that the ISO assessment was scheduled for this July. At that point, it's too far in the process, and there's no way to delay that, so we had to work with what we had. Fortunately for us, the COVID situation had taken hold, and we had been running a squad concept that I'll touch on a little bit later. But that squad concept allowed us to run the five firefighters that we've been running through this process to limit our exposure. The ISO assessment, it hits on, the fire department hits on your water utilities, which is the mud, and hits on our communications. Through that, a 90 or above score will get you an ISO 1 rating, which is the highest rating you can get, which is extremely prestigious. There's not that many across America, and it's very difficult to obtain. However, our assessment was July 6th. It's unofficial, but we have very strong feedback from that, that with what we have in place right now, and we've been able to do creatively in the last few months, we're going to make a significant jump, is what I'll say. But in a couple, two to three months, we'll be getting the official word on that of what our rating is. But I can assure you, when we get that rating, there won't be a higher rating we need to obtain. That's all I'll say on that, but we're very excited about it. Also, in the last year, just the last couple of months, we have been working since I got here, working on an ILA with the city of Watauga to change who does the maintenance on our fire and EMS apparatus. For the past several years, we've had a vendor, a couple of vendors that we've used, and through that, we've paid a lot of high prices. We've also had a lot of downtime that was very excessive. The amount of time it takes for us to get our equipment back is very difficult for a department this size. We don't have a lot of reserve apparatus sitting around that we can bring into action. So, when, for instance, the last time Truck 681 went to Denton to get serviced, it was there for over a month and a half. And we have to rely on our reserve engine that we have. It's in good condition, but if anything were to happen to that engine, we're shut down completely, and we'd have to rely on our surrounding communities to give us full fire support, and that puts everybody in a bad situation there. So, with this ILA, we are now sending our equipment to Watauga to have our preventative maintenance on all our repairs on our fire and EMS equipment. It's already shown that it's a benefit for us. We will save money with it. The costs are a little bit less, not a great amount, but when repairs come about, there is significant cost reductions when we have that. But the timeframe, we just had our reserve engine out for preventative maintenance, and it was just a couple of days that it was out as opposed to a few weeks. So, that's going to help us tremendously going down the road in time and money, which is very important to us. Excuse me. Proposed personnel enhancements, as we talked about, part of that 3% overall budget increase, you'll see an increase of 4.7% in the personnel part of that. The main portion that you're going to see is a $25,000 increase on the fireside. It's 50,000 total. 25 and 25 for EMS and fire, split with the town and mud. What that does for us, this is an increase in the part-time funding for us. With the increase to five firefighter staffing, which will allow us to achieve and maintain an ISO 1 rating, we need that increased staffing. There's a couple of different ways you can do that. You can try to add full-time personnel at a very high price. You're talking payroll and benefits. We could increase our overtime. But I felt like we'd get more bang for our buck increasing the part-time funding for that, where we can get our part-time firefighters in to fill that staffing. I know you're all aware, but for anyone out there listening, our part-time staffing is something that's unique here, that we take professional firefighter paramedics from surrounding departments. On their off days, they come and work part-time at a reduced rate for the Town of Country Club. What that does is allow us to bring in very professional people that have the same mindset as our crews do here, but we don't let them in the door. And they represent us so well that if they're out on the street with our normal full-time personnel, you wouldn't know the difference. They love being in Trophy Club, and they love it when they're working here. So, we get those people that are passionate and love doing the job, and increasing this part-time is going to allow us that opportunity to run the five firefighter staffing. It'll allow us to continue to run our squad response that we started when the COVID hit. Coming from Irving, I was about four weeks ahead in Dallas County with COVID challenges before I came to Trophy Club, so we were deep into it. And one of the things that I implemented over there was a COVID squad. And basically, what that does is a squad would run with the ambulance. We started that process here. So, we put one firefighter medic on the squad. They run with the ambulance to all EMS runs. That allows that one medic, he's the only one that initially accesses that patient. He's in full PPE. He immediately gets a mask on that patient and then assesses that patient. And if there's any more care that's needed, he'll call in the ambulance team in, but if not, he'll take care of the situation themselves. That's worked very well for us because we did it initially just to reduce the exposure to our personnel, to reduce the chance that they're afflicted with COVID-19, and we have that downtime and lose them or possibly get them very ill. So far, it's been extremely successful for us. We did it for that measure. That's the reason we put that into place. However, there's other benefits that's come about through this process that we've learned. It's really benefited the entire department and the operations of this department. One of the biggest, and Mayor Sanders could speak to this, and I've heard him speak about it in the past, but allowing coverage for back-to-back EMS runs is so vital because normally, in the past, when an ambulance runs on EMS run, the ambulance and the truck, the fire truck would run together, so all our personnel are on that run. When a secondary or a back-to-back, either an EMS run or a fire run comes in, we're unable to respond to that. We have to rely completely on automatic aid from your South Lake, West Lake, Roanoke, our surrounding communities to come in and assist. That can be a 20 to 25-minute delay. What the COVID squad has allowed us to do is in those situations, when they run on any EMS or any other community response or critical reduction response, fall patients, anything that they run on, the truck is staying in the station, staying behind. And now, when we have those back-to-back runs, we've seen that we now have immediate access, our truck immediate response to that second run, whether it's a fire response or an EMS response, and we get the time of response that we want to see that gives our residents the best care that they can possibly have without having to wait for someone coming from 20 to 25 minutes away. So, it's been a huge benefit for us and something we really didn't expect. Reducing the wear and tear on the truck has also been a benefit to this, as well as with the squad in the future. I have plans of some initiatives, including community paramedic and some other things that we can do with that medic on that squad to better serve our community, and there are some initiatives that can be started that are very nominal in cost. Some of them don't cost anything. It just takes a little bit of elbow grease, but it's great community service and great customer service that we can provide to our citizens. Excuse me. As you'll see here, this just illustrates what we were talking about with the 3% increase. You can see where we were last year. That increase is 45, 374, I believe, right in that neighborhood, just over $45,000 total that our budget will increase. Excuse me. Looking ahead to FY 2122, the thing we need to think about moving forward from a mud standpoint is capital replacement for our reserve fire engine, Engine 681. It's been a great engine for us. The end of life for Engine 681 is going to be in 2022. It'll be 15 years old. It's a 2007 Pierce with 54,000 miles on it, and it has a cost, an average cost per year over the last three years of repairs, for $17,000. Hopefully, our ILA with Watauga, we'll see some reduction in that, but that is pretty significant. We plan to replace Engine 681 with a Quint. That's basically a firefighting engine with a ladder on top. It's not as big as a truck like we have now, but it's relatively the same size, but allows us to have those roof rescues with high rises, as well as being fully functional and fighting fire. Because with PD-30 and some of the other buildings in town, we have enough high-rise, anything over four stories, that we have to be able to have that and serve that with a Quint apparatus. And they're not cheap. They're anywhere from $900,000 to 1.3 million. And from talking to some of the vendors I've talked to here recently, right now, ballpark's probably 1.1 to 1.3. We're looking at 5% due when we order those, and the balance is due upon delivery. In the past, you can bank on about 12 months to have a fire truck built. That's like building a house. There's a lot of planning that goes into that, and it takes a few months to plan and build a piece of fire equipment. Pierce Manufacturing, who has built all the equipment we have out here currently, has told me that right now, we're currently on a 14 to 18-month build time for fire apparatus. There's always an opportunity. Sometimes you can find what they call a demo, just like a demo car or a spec home, that is a fire truck that's already built that meets our specifications, which might allow us to get one a little bit quicker. That may allow us to save some funds on that as well. Fully open to looking at that, and we want to be creative with this as much as we can. But that's something that we just need to have in the back of our heads so that we think about that. Those discussions probably need to begin during this next fiscal year so we can be prepared for that. Again, fire budget recap, not a whole lot to it this year. We talked about the 3% increase, 45,394, with the 4.7 increase in personnel and benefits budget. And the $25,000 we talked about for part-time is the biggest thing you'll see in there. Now, there are increases that we had no control over, such as workman's comp, retirement, some things such as that, that increased on that top side. On the bottom side, that 1.4%, we did actually have that little bit of a reduction on services and supplies, but overall, it's a 3% increase. COVID-19 is going to present some challenges for us with our training. Obviously, we know what training we need to have, but we've already had some canceled this year, so there'll be funds coming back from this current fiscal year. But we have to base our training on what we know we need to go accomplish for our personnel. We don't know what's down the road for us in COVID. The same thing might happen during this next year. We have that budget set for training, but it may be substantially less, or we may spend all that training budget. So, that's something that's going to be dynamic as we travel through the year, and we'll just have to monitor that as best we can, and we'll work through that. We talked about squad concept and Engine 681 coming up soon for replacement. Now, open it up to any questions you may have.
If you would raise your hand, kind of so we can see it, since we're trying to zoom here. That might make it easier.
Okay, now I can see everybody. If anybody raised their hand, I didn't see it, if you have a question.
The fire department budget we have in our packet, is that the current budget that you're talking about? Because if it is, I don't see the increases on the bottom line.
I can chime in. Bill, the fire department that we have in our packet is for our half of it. That's for the mud. And then, that's the overall budget for the mud. If you look at the fire for, the mud is actually lower. It's 1.27% decrease, and it was last year due to, we don't have any capital replacement this year.
Other questions for Jay at this point? Quiet group. All right. If that's the case, then I will start with the mud side, Nick, and entertain a motion. Mike? You out there? Mr. Rose?
I move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2021 fire department budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Director Rowe is to approve the 2021 fiscal budget, fire budget, seconded by Secretary of Treasury Casting Gay. Any other comments or questions?
Do you want to comment if I can?
Yes.
Sorry, chime in here. I do want to say, if we do have certified numbers for the tax rate, it will put us under the voter-approved rate for an election. So, due to the new certified numbers, we will be under the rate.
Good news. Thank you.
Just so... Which means that we shouldn't have to take anything out of the reserve, correct?
That is correct.
Excellent.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, Bill Rose made the motion seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion approved unanimously. Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed fire budget for 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
I would like to approve the fire budget 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Michael seconded, and Sean moved. All right, it is properly before us. Anybody have any questions? Letty, did you hear me say who's moved and seconded?
Yes, I did.
All right, good. All right. I don't see anybody wishing to speak. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All right, all opposed, same sign. I had one opposed that was Schaffner. Everybody else voted for. All right, it does carry. So, I wanted to ask a question that, now, I guess I'll just make a comment that says the, your fire department debt attachment that you had, I think in a future sense, we need to talk more about that together as a board and a council. So, I'm just going to make that as a comment.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the second agenda item, and that is a discussion and possible action regarding the inter-local agreement with the Town of Trophy Club, gathering a sale or exchange of district real property located at 100 Municipal Drive, 1501 Junction Way, and other real property owned by the district. I'm not sure who is taking the lead on this. We've had a subcommittee. I believe we have in front of us in the packet, a updated and revised proposal. So, who wants to start the discussion on that?
Let me start it, if you don't mind. Steve, does the mud directors, did you get a copy of the changes that the council was suggesting that we approved the other night?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, everybody help me if I'm wrong here, but the agreement for real property, the mud added at its board meeting, a change to Section 4.13. Am I correct in that? I see Greg shaking his head, yes. And the town did not make any changes to that. Am I correct in that?
To that section, correct.
To that agreement.
That's our understanding.
Counsel, you agree with me? We didn't change that agreement at all?
The agreement or that section, 4.13?
The agreement for real property. Yeah, that agreement, not just 4.13.
Yes, we did change that. Or we suggested changes.
There were three changes to the agreement that I saw.
Okay, and so, Mud, do you have the new copy of that agreement for real property?
Yes, we do.
What I had notes of, and Philip or David might can help me, was we changed or added 4.09 and 4.10.
Correct.
Yes, there were changes made to that portion of the agreement.
And so, if I could share, I would share that document unless everybody thinks they know what we're talking about. I think this is it. Let's see what happens. You got a new screen?
Yes, we did.
We'll see it.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, there's the highlighted in yellow proposed changes that the town's saying to 4.09 and 4.10. Any comments from council in reference to those? All right. Any questions from mud directors in reference to those?
Bill?
Looking at 4.09, I don't have any problem with 4.09. I do like to address 4.10 after we take care of 4.09.
Well, go ahead and address 4.10. They're both before you. Make your comment.
Okay, I I need, I really am not pleased with the change. And as I have reviewed the document, looked at the financials involved in this document, I find that this is I don't find it as an equal document, and I think that the the limitation on the tree mitigation significantly decreases the value of the document. After listening to the town council meeting the other night, I understood Councilman Schaffner correctly that the building currently costs, the annex building currently costs the town $20,000 a year. Just before I go into the financial in that section, there's another thing that occurs with this particular agreement, and that is that looking at the finances, this agreement supersedes the 16 October 2006 ILA, which has the mud, or has the town reimbursing the mud for costs of construction. That reimbursement is $583.33 per month, or $7,000 a year, and it extends to July 2026. So, under the current agreement as written, that would go away, that would net a savings to the town of roughly $42,000. That would be an expense that the mud would have to pick up. Now, getting into the discussion that where Councilman Schaffner mentioned $20,000 a year costs of operating the annex building, as I understood it. costs of operating the annex building, as I understood it. If those costs are real and the town is paying them when the agreement goes into effect, those will then become a mud's responsibility. That could also be our cost. So that would amount, since there's a six-year time period on, left on the lease, I've done a set of columns based on six years. So six years at $20,000 is $120,000 additional cost for the mud. Then we need to look at the lease value of the, of the property, the maintenance building, to see what, what impact that might have or the value in the, in the agreement. Had the general manager go out and do a quick query to find out what the lease value might be of that particular section of property. And he advises that the, he found that the average yearly lease was $10 to $12 per square foot, making, making it between $3,300 and $4,000 a month. Since we had, we have large surface storage area to go along with that, I took some calculations and based the value on $4,000 a month. So with that number, the lease value for six years is $288,000. 10 years, 480, excuse me, I'll stick with six years. The, we talked about the removal of the ILA at 42,000. Now, one of the things that the mud is faced with is there is a distinct possibility that we may need to have storage room. And right now, the way the current agreement is written, the mud is supposed to have 50% of the maintenance building. And the town has the entire building. So if we're looking at building a new building, just grab a number out of the sky, you could talk about $400,000 to build a building. So in six years, the mud would be at a deficit of about $850,000. We talk about trying to cover that cost with tree mitigation. Some sort of financial offset there. The only offset in the current agreement is $1 a year as a lease fee, which will allow the mud to net $6, which certainly will not cover the cost of insurance on the building, which the mud will also provide under the agreement. So based on, based on all of that, I will start by placing a motion on the floor to remove section 4.10. The part of the sentence, the last sentence it reads, and disagreement and the maintenance building lease are in effect.
I'm going to call you out of order, Bill, because I was running that portion of the meeting, and I'll turn the meeting back over to Steve, who can entertain a motion in behalf of the mud.
All right, we have a motion from Director Rose to remove section 4.10 tree mitigation from the current LA agreement. Is there a second?
There's a quiet.
Go ahead, Bill.
I need a correction on what you read. The, it's not to remove section 4.10. It's only to remove the last part of the final sentence that reads, and disagreement and the maintenance building lease are in effect.
Okay, corrections? Thank you, Bill. Mark, I see your hand up. Are you seconding the motion?
I got a comment. Bill, you're kind of wrong there. There was another part of that sentence that got substituted. If you look at the original, the original said, ended up, and shall survive the expiration or termination of this agreement. One set of text was substituted for the other. I think what you want to do is revert to the original writing, not remove just that part.
Bill?
I, I concur with what Mark said, and I don't believe at this point, did we get a second on that?
Not yet.
I have not heard a second.
Okay, I withdraw my motion. Let Mark make the motion.
Mark?
You have to come off mute, Mark.
Think I'd learn by now. I would like to make a motion that section 4.10 tree mitigation be reverted back to the original agreement that says and terminates and shall survive the expiration or termination of this agreement.
Okay, motion from Vice President Chapman regarding section 4.10 to revert back to the original wording in the, in the original document. Do I have a second on Mark's motion? I do not see a second on Mark's motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Director Rose. I don't think there's any, is there any further discussion needed? Greg?
I, I just have a question. So reverting back to the previous language, is going to somehow net the $800,000 over the next six years? I, I'm trying to get my calculator to come, to get to that calculus.
Bill, that was your comment?
Maybe it won't. Let's just vote.
Okay, so what we are voting on, so everybody's clear, is the revised motion. We are not voting on the original motion. All of those in favor of the revised motion brought up again by Vice President Chapman, seconded by Bill Rose. Raise your hand. All those opposed? I see, first of all, it was Mark and Bill in support. All of those opposed? That would be Steve, Greg, and Kelly, is your hand up? Kelly? It is opposed. Motion fails.
I'd like to make
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the agreement as presented at the deus with the changes that's indicated for the sale and exchange of real property located 100 Trophy Club Drive, 1501 Junction Way.
Director.
Owned by the district.
Thank you. Director Wilson moves to approve the motion, moves to approve the interlocal agreement with the town, the Trophy Club regarding the sale and exchange of district property, real property located 100 Municipal Drive, 1501 Junction Way, and other real property owned by the district. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Casting Day. Any further comment? Bill?
For the reasons that I have previously listed, I believe that this is a is not in the best interest of the of the mud, nor any fair interest of the mud, and I will oppose the agreement.
Okay. Before I take the vote, I am going to weigh in. I don't see this last sentence that has been added by the town as really material impacting, materially impacting anything from the previous agreement. What it says is, I read it, is if in fact, the agreement, if the agreement goes away, or if that land is sold, then the tree mitigation goes away as well. I don't see that as a big issue personally. Any other commentary? Bill?
I, I think, I think that we should be looking at some sort of return from the lease on, on the agreement. I could see maintaining the current ILA. I could, I could see sending this back to the committee, maintaining the current ILA to, to allow the town to continue to pay the the original agreed amount, and then developing a lease, three-year renewable lease with a commercial, with an agreed-upon commercial rate and going from there. So I, I
Okay, Director Wilson.
I'd say one thing, we, we spent months negotiating this agreement, and I personally find it not negotiated in good faith to, at the last minute, starting to introduce brand-new concepts and ideas. I admittedly oppose that. I don't think it's, it's the type of behavior that foster good working relationships, where you spend months and months debating and having conversations and coming to an agreement, and then at the last minute, bringing up things that have never been discussed at any point in time. So I just don't think that's a good way to do business. It doesn't build trust. It doesn't build relationships. I think that's our obligation to, the way we ought to treat two entities that are located within the same jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Any other commentary? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Again, the motion as laid out by Director Wilson, seconded by Secretary of Treasury Casting Day, is to approve the ILA agreement with Trophy Club for the sale and real exchange district property located at 15 100 Municipal Drive, 1501 Junction Way, and other real property owned by the district. All those in favor?
Director Flynn.
Sir.
Director Flynn, I'm sorry. Oh, she's back now. I was going to say you just lost one of your members right before you voted.
That wouldn't be good. Kelly, are you back? Kelly Casting Day. I see somebody trying to connect. Kelly, is that you?
No, that's another guest. I don't see Kelly coming up.
Okay, well, let's wait a minute, and we're going to have, we'll bring Kelly back up. I'm sending her a text. Give us one second, guys.
While we're waiting, Steve, you referred to this as ILA. Isn't it really titled Agreement Regarding Real Property Matters?
Okay.
It is laid out local regarding ILA, well, the way it's worded is ILA in a local agreement with Town of Trophy Club and regarding the sale and exchange of district property.
But you're referring to your agenda item.
Yes, I am.
So look at the title of the document.
Okay. It is Agreement Regarding the Real Property Matters. So that is what we're approving? Is that what you're saying, Nick?
I think.
For clarification.
I, I think. I don't know that it matters. Your agenda says one thing, but that, the, the, the agenda item says, I think, interlocal agreement slash commercial lease. I don't know if yours says the same thing. That's what ours says. So it's
I think there's Yeah, I think there's a difference, Nick.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Is there a, is there a room? Does someone have to invite you in? She said she was trying to call back in, and it said it was, she was waiting to be admitted.
I'm looking right now, and I do not see her.
He's texting me. Hold on, guys. Kelly, can you hear us? We can't see you, but we probably, you probably can't hear us.
Steve, have her disconnect and start over.
Yeah.
Would you guys like to take it? While she resolves a technical difficulty?
I think that's a great idea. Nick?
All right, so did, did y'all get your vote in to?
No.
No.
They're waiting on Kelly.
Okay, so you never finished your vote. All right. So council, the thing that's agendaed for us is this agreement of real property is the actual agreement that we were talking about at this point, which had 4.09 added, I mean, or changed, and 4.10 changed, and also had the section 4.13 that the mud had added. So I would entertain a motion to approve that, if you want.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement regarding real property matters as presented.
All right, Sean moved. I have a second.
Second.
Second is Michael. All right. So we do have that matter before us. Any discussion?
No, I, you know, I'll just say this, Nick. I think that both of our intentions going into this was certainly to waive that tree mitigation. That if you look at that piece of property from border to, north, southeast, west, there must be a million and 200,300 trees. God, it's crazy. It's just packed tree to tree to tree. And so I think some of you who may have watched the council meeting, PD 30, which has not near as many trees as that property, the tree mitigation on PD 30 was just over $400,000. And so it, you know, I've always looked at the mud and the town as left pocket, right pocket, and so it made no sense for us that as long as the mud wanted to put a building on that, do something on that land, that we would charge tree mitigation or tree removal. There's even tree removal fees that would be placed on that. So I think it was Nick, Nick and I's intention, intention to certainly not charge that if the mud ever built something on it. And so I think that the document that we have kind of captures our intention. So I support the motion.
All right, anybody else on council wish to make a motion? I mean, make a comment. All right, seeing no one, looks like they're seeking to speak. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the, our agenda item number two for the interlocal agreement slash agreement for real property, raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. I got unanimous, no opposed, Letty. And so at this time, I will turn the meeting back over to Steve to finish what he was dealing with.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, can you hear us now?
He's muted.
Kelly, come off mute.
All right, sorry, you guys.
Okay.
So I didn't hear everything that went on. I think Bill was talking last when my connection, when I lost the connection.
Let, let me bring you up to speed to where we're at, Kelly. I'm not sure when you cut out, but there is a motion on the, that is in front of us. You, you actually seconded. The motion was from Director You seconded it. There was some conversation. Bill had some conversation. Greg had some conversation. We are past the conversation point now, unless you have any words you want to add. We, the motion is in front of us. So
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Can I just clarify? So to the point that the mayor may, if we look at our agreement, if we look at the the item, it is to, my motion, and I want to just clarify, is to approve the 2020-0720 Revised ILA Regarding Real Property Matters. That's the actual name of the agreement. The first comment I made related to the actual The first comment I made related to the actual line item on the agenda, but the actual agreement is the 2007 20 Revised ILA Regarding Real Property Matters. I'd like to have Director Castingley second that amended amendment to the motion, just to make sure we are good.
Okay, yes, I second that amendment.
Okay, so we're back to, thank you for that clarification, Greg, on the revised motion. We have it in front of us as a board. So all those in favor of the motion that Greg laid out on the 2020 ILA Revised ILA Agreement, please show your hands. Prove. I see Director Castingley, Director Wilson, and myself, Steve Flynn. All those opposed? Director, Vice President Chapman opposed. Director Rose opposed. Motion carries. I believe there is no other business, Nick. Do you have any other business? I don't think there is.
Isn't there the lease agreement? Or did it stay the same?
There is no, I, I'm not seeing anything different. We just approved the revised agreement, which the lease agreement was part of that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The lease agreement was the bottom of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry. For a while, we had those as two different documents.
Yep. Nothing else on council side?
Anybody on council have anything?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Can I second?
You can say it, but now that there was a motion, you got it before I was going to adjourn on our own. All those approved, please raise your hand for approval.
See you guys.
Thank you all.
I declare this, the, the adjournment of town council at 7:24 PM.
And I adjourn special joint meeting at 7:24 PM as well. Thank you all.